Yes.
Making everybody a little sleepy.
Absorb all the sound.
Destiny.
That's a new meaning for the word trees.
Yeah, Rollins trees.
Oh yeah, I don't even need a cable. God, what that's like. How was everybody's Thanksgiving?
Good.
Way more.
Those were.
Or less.
Nina was gone, so we did Thanksgiving again on Saturday. Oh, man.
We had two, too.
Four days straight of turkey. And she left yesterday Sunday, so that was what was for dinner last night.
Again.
I'm not a super turkey lover myself.
I love turkey.
You say soup turkey?
Soup turkey.
My, they did. Patrick did.
I know, that's good. Turkey, that one. Where you put a piece of bread down and you put slices of turkey on it and you get some brown gravy.
Oh, like a.
Yeah.
Bring that.
And these are easy meals to take five minutes to cook for the kids.
The same spot.
I bet we haven't cooked a turkey in our house.
All right, it is six o'clock. Let's call this meeting to order and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lynn, will you conduct roll call, please?
Madam Mayor, Jaclyn Moes.
Here.
Vice Mayor Darryl Carr.
Here.
Councilmember Derek Elliott.
Here.
Councilmember Tanya Lumen.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Patterson.
Here.
Councilmember Steve Sanger.
Here.
Councilmember Bruce Seelof.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, moving down to the approval of the agenda. Councilmember Sanger?
Stuck a cookie in my mouth. Nice timing. Move to approve the December 2nd, 2025 City Council Agenda as presented.
Circuit.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to approve the December 2nd, 2025 City Council Agenda as presented. Any discussion? Lynn, when you're ready, will you open online voting, please?
Online voting is open.
Yay.
My voting has closed, the motion passes with seven yays.
All right, moving down to the approval of the consent agenda. Councilmember Sanger?
I move to approve the consent agenda of December 2nd, 2025 as presented.
Circuit.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda of December 2nd, 2025 as presented. Any discussion? All right, Lynn, will you open online voting, please?
Yay.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed, the motion passes with six yays and one abstain. The one abstain was Councilmember Elliott.
All right, moving down to a public hearing. And this a public hearing is to approve the renewal application for the Carving County Services, Inc., Doing Business as Rollins Senior Senator Advisory Council, that filed an application for renewal for of a bingo pull tab gaming license application for 2026. Is there anybody here that would like to discuss this public hearing? Okay, hearing none, I will close that public hearing and move down to another public hearing of approving the renewal application for the City of Rollins Lodge Number 609 Benevolent and Protective Order of the Elks, BPOE Number 609, that filed an application for renewal of bingo pull tabs gaming license application for 2026. Is there anybody here that would like to talk on that? Hearing none, I will close that public hearing and move on to another public hearing for approving the renewal application for the Boys and Girls Club of Carving County, Inc., that filed an application for the renewal of the bingo pull tab gaming license application for 2026. Is there anybody here that would like to just talk about that? Hearing none, I will close that public hearing and move down to the last public hearing, which is a resolution authorizing an amendment to the City of Rollins Fiscal Year 2025, 2026 Municipal Budget for Compliance Paid to the City of Rollins Personnel Employees. Is there anybody here that would like to discuss that? Hearing none, I will move down to citizens particip-- oh, I will close that public hearing and move down to citizens' participation. This is a time set by Resolution Number 2C, 1996, that sets a time limit for public comment of five minutes, with the provision that the five-minute time limit may be increased at the request of a member of the public or any council member subject to the vote of the council. Is there anybody here that would like to speak on something that is not on the agenda? Okay. Oh, come on up, Pam. Please state your name for the record.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. I'm sorry, we just were doing our drawing for warm wishes and we had a big bucket of people from this past weekend. I just wanted to kind of give you a quick update on this weekend and also an update on the streetlights. So, um, so yeah, so we had people waiting in line at 5:30 on Friday morning of downtown businesses. I don't even remember the last time we had people waiting in line. Had three or four businesses that opened at 6:00. And I have a merchant who just told me that at 5:42, 5:32, sorry, they were had pulled up in front of her store, so it's pretty exciting. It was, um, we had 21 different businesses open between Friday and Saturday and everybody said that it was, it was a good weekend, so. And again, we gave a $500 basket away and we just did that drawing over at Serendipity. So, um, that's the first thing. Second thing real quick is, um, I want to thank multiple people, but Steve Sanger as a volunteer, as a board member for DDA. And we, out of the 100-plus, I think we're at 100, there's 111 streetlights in the park and we're, I think we're at 10 that are not working and they're all electrical. And Cody's been working with Acme, um, and so I think there's two snowflakes out of the 30-plus, but we're, we're almost there. So, I know, and then I met with, or I had a conversation with a contractor today, or at least a contractor who said, "Well, it looks like your lights are getting all taken care of and you guys are going to be doing Phase Two this summer." And I said, "Let's have a conversation." It was really cool to be able to have that, so I just wanted to give you that update.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
And thank you, Steve, for all your hard work. If you haven't seen him, he's been hanging from light poles for a couple of weeks now. All right, moving down to board appointments and presentations. And the first one is the Employee of the Third Quarter for 2025. And I will pass it back or pass it over to you, City Manager Matt Hall.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers, and I will pass it over to our Finance Director Department.
So it is my honor to present the third quarter of 2025. The individuals selected for this are from nominations received from coworkers, supervisors, and managers throughout the city. Nominations are reviewed by the leadership team and an individual is chosen based on following qualifications. They must have been employed by the city for the entire quarter. And each nominated employee must not have any reprimands, verbal or otherwise, that originated during the quarter that they're nominated for. So at this time, it is my honor to present it to Ms. Beverly Hannum, if you would come up. She thinks she's here for an audit update, so she's.
I was like to. Forgot to text Scott.
Um, we nominated Beverly for the 2025 Employee Quarter of, third quarter of 2025. Um, over the past year, Bev has consistently stepped up in taking on significant new responsibilities within the Finance Department, and this was during a period without the Finance Director. Uh, despite the increased workload and pressure, she handled every challenge with professionalism, dedication, and unwavering positive attitude. She has regularly worked weekends and long hours to ensure the City of Rollins remains compliant with all state and federal requirements, successfully completing essential documents such as the F-66, managed the year-end audit responsibilities, and ensured accurate and timely reporting. In addition to her own duties, she's taken on the supervision of additional employees and has been a steady and reliable resource for staff across the organization, always willing to jump in whenever needed. From a fiduciary standpoint, Bev has kept the Finance Department and truly the entire city running smoothly and responsibly. Her commitment, integrity, and worth eth-- work ethic have played a critical role in keeping operations compliant and moving forward. As leadership, dedication, and positive presence, made an exceptional candidate for the Employee of the Quarter. She embodies the values and spirit of public service and the City of Rollins is stronger for having her. And so I present to you your certificate. Congratulations, thank you.
Congratulations, Bev, thank you. Congratulations, Bev, I can't think of anybody more deserving of it. Thank you. All right, moving down to the approval of a board resignation. Councilmember Steve Sanger?
I move to accept David Break's resignation from the Rochelle Ranch Golf Course Advisory Board, effective immediately, and direct community relations to advertise to fill the vacancy for the remainder of the term, which expires December 31st, 2027.
Circuit.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to accept David Break's resignation from the Rochelle Ranch Golf Course Advisory Board, effective immediately, and direct community relations to advertise to fill the vacancy for the remainder of the term. Any discussion? Okay, Lynn, will you open online voting, please?
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed, the motion passes with seven yays.
Okay, moving down to reports and information and the City Manager and Staff Reports.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. Uh, as our DDA Director pointed out, it was a very festive and productive Thanksgiving weekend with a lot of downtown activities, so that's, it's good to hear, it's helpful. And that, of course, leads us right into the rest of the silly season. Yeah, top, starting it off, the, the annual Starlight Parade is scheduled for Wednesday, December 10th, starting at 6:00 PM. Parade will begin at the intersection of Pine and Fifth Street, proceeding down Cedar Street and then onto Fourth Street, concluding at the Depot, where Santa and Mrs. Claus will be serving cookies and hot cocoa. Let's see, the city again will be hosting the annual online map for residents and businesses who have decorated for the holiday season. And again, that map will be online on our website Thursday, December 4th. Of course, all the cities, just as a reminder for everyone and for the community, all the city's offices and facilities will be closed on Thursday and Friday, December 25th and 6th, in the observance of Christmas, with the police and fire remaining open to serve our community, of course. And Rollins Landfill will be remaining reopening Saturday, December 27th, 2025, at its regular time. The landfill will be closed this Saturday, December 6th, all day for technological upgrades, and we, of course, apologize for the inconvenience to our citizens. On a little bit more of the landfill topic, our fire department continues to do some controlled burns out at the landfill. Uh, the police department had a new officer, Bobby Bannon, graduated from the Police Academy this past Wednesday, November 26th, 2025, and Chief Ward and two other officers, I believe.
Lieutenant Ray Cooper and Detective Jerick Freeman. I'm sorry, Jerick Freeman.
Thanks, Chief. Went up.
I've got too many jurors.
Uh, attended that, and so that's good. We're glad to have him aboard. Um, as far as some extra meetings, last Monday, the 24th, the DDA Board of Directors hosted a dinner with the council and we had, uh, Councilmember Lumen, Seelof, of course, Councilmember Sanger being our director on that board, and Mayor Wells, myself, all attended. And that was very informative, it was nice, uh, had good Mexican food and, huh? Oh, yeah, that's right, sorry, Councilmember Patterson. Yes, you too. Go Pokes. But, uh, but yeah, it was, uh, it was very informative. It was a, a good night to, to hear just a lot of the many things that DDA is involved in and, and some of the projects that they're working on. We're good to have them as a, as a partner for our community. Of course, the Edinburgh Street Project has begun and, um, I've yet to make it over there, but, uh, our Public Works Director has been on it and so have their engineering firms, and so hopefully that's going as smoothly as can be. And, and then lastly, what I'm going to do is I'll invite, um, she hadn't had enough FaceTime, so I'm going to invite our Finance Director to come up and give a little bit of update on a budget calendar that she's been working on. So Laura?
Uh, Madam Mayor, Honorable Counsel, as, um, we, as the weather gets colder and everyone goes, "Gee, I can't wait till it's warmer," I go, "By the time it's warmer, it's budget time." So, um, I have been working on our fiscal year 2027 budget. This is the budget that will go from July of '26 to June of 2027. Um, with that, there's a lot of time constraints that go into it, and so I kind of had to start from the end and move forward. I have set some staff work sessions, um, and I've also kind of penciled in some council work sessions throughout, uh, the month of May and then into June so that we can get everything approved on time. Um, at this time, everything is penciled in, but we will have more confirmed dates as we move into January for all of you. Um, so that we can finish up, my goal is, of course, the approved budget has to be done by June 16th this year, or in 2026, I should say. And so the final council time is June 16th. Um, so I think you can look forward to some more, uh, concrete dates from us, um, especially as the staff and I work through individual meetings and try and figure out what we can do going forward. Thank you.
And I believe that's all we have from the Managed Report and Staff, so our Attorney Report?
Tanya, did you have a question?
I just had a quick question, the technological upgrades. Can you elaborate what that is? Is it just changing Microsoft, is it a new system?
You know, I am not sure, and Cody did say that he wanted to be here, but it was under the weather and so that one didn't quite, Myra had a similar answer to that.
Madam Mayor and Honorable Counsel, it is the, the scale will be out. They're doing the software upgrade. On that software, so it's not set by us, it's by the paradigm software.
Okay, thank you. All right, City Attorney Report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Honorable Counsel. So with Edinburg, I did have a chance to, um, so I don't have any updates other than it is progressing fantastically. I also had the opportunity to take, um, Justin, my job shadow, to on a field trip so that he could see the culmination of all of our departments working together and got a good tutorial from, uh, from Cody on public works and the interplay. So even just from an observational standpoint, everything is going according to plan. The one update that I did, you know, uh, did hear is that the pipes are supposed to arrive next week. I think, uh, so the, so a lot of those pipes should begin arriving. There had been some delays because of weather where they were located, but they are making their way across. It is the middle of winter. So, um, those timeframes had been baked into the schedule, so hopefully, you know, we don't have too many setbacks, but, um, we continue our progressing forward. Um, in regard to legal updates, there are no other strictly legal updates. I've been working closely with, uh, with Matt and with the department heads on a lot of projects that are moving forward. We've got the wheels turning, so, um, nothing is really sticking out. And, uh, everything is moving forward, um, with all of the city projects as well as prosecutions. Everything's just forging ahead.
Uh, I do have a question, Penny. Where are you at with the liquor, um, resolution?
Uh, that is actually, I believe it may be on.
Oh, it made it on. I didn't even see they made it on. Okay, great, thank you. All right, City Council Updates. Okay, Councilmember Elliott?
I have a few. Uh, so I received calls from constituents about the lack of snow or anti-skid material being laid down during this past weekend. Looks like the city crews may have went out Sunday afternoon and people were having a hard time diving around in it, in the snow. Also, city outsourcing labor that can be done by city workers. Costs can be lowered if the city did the work in-house. Again, these are comments I received. Can we have before and after aerial views of the Lawrence property, uh, on the city website to show the progress?
Okay, any other comments or questions? All right, moving down to unfinished business and the ordinance to untable and approve the third and final reading and waiving the reading of the ordinance amending Title 19. Councilwoman Lumen?
I move to untable and approve the third and final reading and waiving the reading of the ordinance amending Title 19, Section 19.08.285, junk and Section 19.08.290, junk salvage wreckage yard, adding in Section 19.08.265 impound, Section 19.08.266 impound yard, Section 19.08.603 salvage yard, Section 19.08.721, towing business, Section 19.08.722, towing yard in Section 19.08.759, wrecking yard and clarifying, Section 19.28.020, schedule of uses, and Section 19.40.050 fences.
Circuit.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to untable and approve the third and final reading and waiving the reading of the ordinance amending Title 19. And I will hand it over to you, Lou.
Thank you, um, Madam Mayor and Honorable Counsel. After the, the last meeting that we had, um, it was determined by staff that there's, there seems to be a lot of confusion with, uh, grandfathering. What do we grandfather, what we don't grandfather? So it is, it is staff's recommendations that, um, we, um, get to the right picture, that we eliminate the grandfathering clause. So it would be straight across the board for everybody at that point.
Do you, does anybody have any questions? Councilmember Sanger?
So this is on fences. The height is going to go from six to eight, is that correct on the commercial?
In, in our, our current schedule of uses, we do have a mixture of six to eight. You can go with six foot and then have the two foot of barbed wire on the top in the industrial area. So that's where the six to eight is.
So we're just adding to the top of the fence they currently already have?
Correct.
So they, they can use a fence extension and all that?
Yes.
That normal stuff? Okay.
Any other questions? Councilmember Elliott?
So this would be that nobody would be grandfathered in? It would just start fresh?
That, that's, um, the council's choosing. If we want to go with the grandfathering, we, we want to look at having, um, some sections grandfathered. But to make it easier, I think this would be the grandfather clause completely strike, strike it out and basically, basically start from scratch. And then, yes, we would have some non-conforming uses. We would have a Board of Adjustment meetings to accommodate these requests that come in.
I believe that would be a hardship on our current citizens with the fences that they currently have up, so I wouldn't be for that.
So one thing we, we, I guess, um, Madam Mayor and Councilman, is I think where there's some confusion as well is the industrial versus residential. We're just talking about C1, C2, and industrial. That's where, that's where we're at with this. Residential's still going to stay the same. There won't be any changes on that.
Correct, but there are some, uh, industrial places that it would create a hardship for them of our, uh, Rollins residents that own those businesses.
And we're going to have, we will have some financial hardships with this, but if we come in with a, say I have a towing yard, I have six-foot fence, and if I go and, and go to the Board of Adjustments and say we have six foot, now we're required to have eight foot, then the Board of Adjustments and we'll have a timeframe that will work with the businesses to meet the requirements.
Is there any way that a business, an industrial business, would be able to get a loan through the city or with the city's help to bring them up to code?
I'd have to refer that to our attorney. Um, I, I don't believe that the city is in that, uh, financial situation to do that. I'll leave it to Penny.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, uh, Councilor Elliott. Um, no, that is not something the city is, um, prepared to, to handle and, and we don't have a department that would be able to do something like that. But as additional clarification, the eight-foot fence requirement isn't, is not an arbitrary number. It is aligned with the International Building Codes. And so that's, that would keep all of our building codes in alignment. So it also facilitates, um, enforcement and the ability of staff, um, and unfortunately we have limited staff, to be able to just make sure what is in compliance. Otherwise, they're having to go back and forth. Is this a legal, non-conforming? Is this something that somebody put up without complying with the regulations? Did they even seek a permit? There's, there's a lot of additional legwork that would be imposed on staff and as well as other neighboring properties, it just standardizes the outlook.
It, it does standardize it, but I'm worried about the financial hardship that these companies or residents are going to be impacted by. So that's my concern. Have, uh, have these, uh, business owners been contacted to ask their opinion of it?
Madam Mayor and, and Councilman Elliott, um, we've had numerous, um, planning zoning meetings, Board of Adjustment meetings. We've had tow companies come in and sit in on the meetings as well. So, um, everybody's invited and, and we haven't had anybody up to this date, with the exception of them meetings, just to show their presence in our planning zoning Board of Adjustments at them meetings just to see what the whole, um, picture was, how it was going to work out.
Have they been reached out to and invited to the meetings?
Well, it, it's advertised through our website. It's, it's just one of them things that we have numerous ways. If they have questions, they could call our office. They could come up and visit. We're, we have an open door policy, so if there was something along the way, so even after the first reading, um, they could come up, second reading, they could come up. But we still, not one has come forward up to this point.
Do, do you have a listing of those companies? That maybe we might be able to table this, reach out to them, and then get their input? Because it's their money and they're the ones that are going to be impacted.
And, and I, I can, Madam Mayor and Honorable Counsel, um, that's a decision that, um, council has to make. I don't know what we'll do if we table it again. That's, that's where we're at.
Councilmember Sanger?
Our obligation currently is to. Our obligation currently is to post what we're doing. This has been a bone of contention for a very long time. If they are not going, that's on them. It's not on us. We have meetings every two weeks they can come to. They can pick up the phone and call. They can go to the office. But when they call you and not call the people who are writing the ordinance or coming here to this meeting as of right now, that's on them. It's not on us. These meetings are very well advertised. All of the meetings are advertised. If they don't go, you can't hold a gun to their head, you don't call them on the phone, hold their hand, and carry them down there. You just can't. If they're a business owner, you would think that they would be showing up.
Council, Councilmember Elliott.
I think that people get busy in their daily lives and they could have missed it. And so I just want to make sure that we extinguish or that we're able to, to go to every avenue if it's going to impact somebody in a financial, in a financial way. That's my opinion on it.
Councilwoman Lumen?
A couple of questions. One, I see that you have the transition, a grace period. It's not like they're going to go out tomorrow and give them tickets or expect it to be built. There will be that talk with the specific businesses that are out of compliance, letting them know, hey, you're out of compliance, this is what we're expecting. Can you tell us more about your transition grace period thoughts?
Madam Mayor and Counsel, what our transition is, is we don't want to say, you know, it's winter time, we want this up next month.
Yeah.
So we'd be looking at spring, early summer. We want to work with the people, whether it's a tow business, whatever business in the industrial area. We want to work with them. We're not going to say, okay, tomorrow if this passed tonight, tomorrow we have to start following through with this. We're not going to do that. My job is to make sure that we follow through and follow the ordinance. And if we're following the ordinance, and I think it takes, if we can show that one person is following the rules, then the other ones will probably follow suit and go along with it. That's what we're hoping.
Councilmember Sanger.
Do you have a hard timeline? June 30th, June 20th?
I could say first of July would probably be, we could start looking at making, enforcing that part of it.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
No. Go ahead. So everybody that has a six-foot fence will have to come up to the eight-foot fence if we pass this? Or are they grandfathered?
Honorable Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor Garner, it is, it's not everybody. It depends on the specific use. So the schedule of uses, so it delineates certain types of fences, whether they're in, in industrial or whether they're in commercial C1 or C2, or the type of use. And so that, there are variable factors in there.
Everybody in that type of use would have to. So say they're six-foot now and they're...
Yes.
They would have to come up to the eight-foot. They've already built the fence to the code that exists, correct?
We, most likely, the majority have.
And then we're going to ask them to tear down their fences and rebuild?
No.
Bigger fences?
No. Councilmember Sanger actually just spoke to this. There are ways to increase the height with little add-on extensions or with barbed wire.
Barbed wire is ugly. Why would we ask them to put barbed wire?
It is, it's an option.
Well, I mean, that's my point. I guess my, I guess my concern with this is we're telling them, hey, you're in compliance now, but we're going to change the rules. Now you got to build more onto your structure to be in compliance. That's like the fire code with, I mean, if you're not changing your property type or doing something with it, you don't have to put a fire suppression in. But if you do change the type, you have to put fire suppression in to get up to code. Why wouldn't we grandfather this the same way?
Madam Mayor and Vice Mayor, this is the issue that we come up to the last meeting. We had grandfathered and not grandfathered. So now it seems like we're making that circle again.
Yeah.
Do we want it or don't we?
Right, so I had one more question if that's okay. It says on here, we got option 40 dot 50 E and, or 40 dot 50 H, correct? Are we, did you, are we voting on E?
That was also my question. The motion, which one was, is that for? Or does the motion need amended to state which one we are voting for?
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Lumen, Vice Mayor Garner, so each of those sections, E and H, they're different sections, and those were the two sections that had potential grandfathering provisions. Subsection E regulates electrified fencing. And under that, when it was initially proposed to council was, do we do grandfathering or not? There is one known electrified fence in town, and that's it. And, but, you know, what if there's others, right? And so the, I, the international codes also recommend against electrified fencing, particularly in residential areas or where there are a lot of human traffic. So eliminating that gap is what staff recommends, just no electrified fencing in town. And for H, that is strictly the height in, fence height in industrial zone. So not in C1, not in C2, only in industrial.
So the question was, the motion is...
Right, so that's what, that's what it is.
...without grandfather clauses. That is what the motion is for.
No, the motion is only to approve and, and untable and approve the third and final reading. And it still is, it's still up in the air whether grandfathering is or is not in.
So should she amend her motion to either allow grandfathering or?
Yes.
I would like to amend my emotion.
Motion, motion.
Yeah. I'd like to amend my motion for the ordinance to be without grandfather clauses.
I'll second it again.
So at least we know what we're voting on.
Okay, Councilmember Sanger.
So the barbed wire question, doesn't have to be barbed wire. The extension, you can put anything on it that you want to put on it, I would think. It's just as long as it reaches two feet above the top of the chain link current fence. And they do make extensions for those. You don't have to put a, you don't have to make it look like a prison. You can just put wire, right? Just regular Bailey, standard fencing wire.
And they do have smoothbore wiring for the top without the...
Without the bars.
Without the bars.
And it just, it just looks like rail. It's just, it's just a wire. So they have that option as well. But it does bring it into compliance, which we mess with the IBC enough as it is, and the IBC is 2,700 pages long. When we start doing stuff like this, it just, it's out of control before you know it.
And one thing also, Madam Mayor and Honorable Counsel, is we start off in the NFPA 101 Life Safety Code issues. That's 200, 300 pages in itself. So you're basically bouncing back and forth from whether it's the residential code, the building code, the 101 Life Safety Code. So yes, there is, there is some gray area in there, but if we make it the same all the way across the board, then we're going to eliminate a lot of headaches.
Councilmember Patterson.
I've never heard anything said yet, but does the IBC have a specific number of strands of barbed wire that have to go up there?
No.
So they could put one strand up there, two feet higher than the fence and they would...
But Madam Mayor and Councilman Patterson, I've only seen the top rails that go up with spots for three wires. I haven't seen two or one. So if you're going to the expense of putting the one wire up there, yes, it's going to cost you more for the three, but aesthetically, I think it would look better with, but this is my opinion, the three on there.
Councilmember Elliott.
Has there been a cost study to see what the cost would be to bring up any of these industrial up to code? So what would be the out-of-pocket cost to the owner of the property?
That I really couldn't answer, Madam Mayor and Counsel. I know if we issue a permit, it's based on the cost of material and what it takes to put it up. So you look at the one that just went out on the industrial area, they got sliding electric gates. So all that takes into play too. If we talk about three strands, sliding electric gates, then there's costs associated with all of it. But to give you a number to say, yes, it's going to cost, you know, $40,000, I couldn't do that.
Well, it would depend on the amount of feet.
Yeah, depend on your lot size, what you're enclosing.
And what you wanted to do.
Yeah, and what you wanted specifically to do.
The biggest share of them down there are, you have the six-foot bar, chain link with the three strands on top of already down through, they're the biggest share.
Yep.
Down there already. I mean, eight like this or something just, just wasn't banned. It's been in our rules before.
Yeah, and that's, that's the thing that we're, we're dealing with, Madam Mayor and Counsel, is it's been in our ordinance before. And trying to follow suit with it now, it's, it makes it difficult on staff. It's definitely going to make it difficult on our attorney, because I'm sure even our city manager, we're, we're probably going to get complaints, and that's the first place they're going to go.
Vice Mayor?
So I guess my question is, what, why wouldn't we want a grandfather for them? Why wouldn't, for, for the ones that have pre-existing structure? Why can't we grandfather them in? And then moving forward, anybody who changes their property type or buys the property has to get up to code if, you know, the property type or the business situation changes? Why wouldn't, why wouldn't we do it that way? Why would we force everybody to change everything they already got up to code once? Because I mean, if we could do that endlessly, then we'd bankrupt people. And I, and I guess that's my, my biggest concern about this is I'm all for changing the code and supporting the new regulations and going up to the eight-foot. What I'm not for is being able to change these codes all the time. And I know it's not all the time, but it could be. And this costs going to the, the property owner every single time we make a change because the, the rules change.
I can answer why we brought that up at the last meeting. Were you, were you at the last? I can't remember where we brought it up. We had several emails from several community members about the grandfather clause because what happens is, is people put up a fence when nobody's looking, and then we don't know if it was permitted. We don't know when it was constructed. They could say it was constructed two years ago and it wasn't. And it's a lot of staff trying to prove what was done versus what wasn't done. It's also, there was stuff about beautification, safety. I can't remember all of the points, but there were several emails that were sent to us explaining why it would not be good to have the grandfather clauses in there. And that's why it was brought up.
And I, I can, I can see the point, but I guess, the point for why they want to go to these fences, but I, the grandfather part protects the people who were in compliance. And the people who weren't in compliance, they should have been made to get into compliance just like the ones that we're going to do now. Because if they built, if they, if that was the code and then they bought the property and never built their fences like they were supposed to, that's still their responsibility to get up to code because they bought it and they needed to get into compliance at that time. But what we're doing is saying, you know, all these pre-existing businesses, you now have to get, you were up to code, the ones that were, and now we're going to tell you, you got to go up even further. We got a new requirement, and then next year, we're going to change it, and we're going to say, you can't have the barbed wire, you need to change it because we want opaque fences or something. You know, that's the new code. So now they got to tear it all down and rebuild it again instead of being grandfathered and protected. I, I guess that's my concern about it. I'm, I'm not against the code, I'm just against making people change their property every single time they meet the requirement.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor Garner. Absolutely valid, you know, comments and concerns. This has been in queue since about, my understanding, since about 2016. And so this is, and it's kind of been halted for a number of years. In regard to constant changes, that's actually what we are against doing is constant changes. It does require additional enforcement, all those sorts of things. So we're, you know, that's not lost on us at all. But it is more of the alignment with the rest of the codes, with the international codes. This facilitates overall enforcement. It really just goes down to simplicity for, not just enforcement for the city, but also uniformity within the industrial area. And I actually just looked up what these fencing materials cost. Wireline arms, galvanized steel, about $14 a piece. Depending on the span of fences, you need rolls of wire. Barbed wire is 200 and some dollars for a barbed wire for 1,500 feet. So I don't know what that, you know, overall would, you know, cost for just unbarbed line, which would be less. So it's, we're not looking at a major expense for property owners. Additionally, as Lou commented, is this will be a phased process. And if there is a financial hardship, there are, you know, that, that's certainly something that can be considered by the Board of Adjustments.
Councilwoman Lumen?
So my question would be, approximately, how many businesses would this affect? Rough guess.
Madam Mayor and Councilwoman Lumen, it's, there again, I couldn't give you a precise number that we have.
I don't want precise, just a...
Yeah, but I'd be guessing and throwing a number out there. I just can't do that.
Okay.
I don't know. I, it's, it's hard to say.
So are most of our businesses in compliance with the eight-foot fence?
Some of them are. Most recent ones that we've had, we know which ones went in, and we know which one came in after the fact, like it was brought up earlier. So there will be some minor adjustments on that one. But the one that I know of has the three strands of barb at the top. They have the electric fence or the electric gate, and that is compliant. Where we also run into, this was also tried to get pushed through previously, and we had people in the industrial area that went with the six-foot cedar fence. Well, when this came up again, it's flat out told us that he's not doing it because he's the only one that did it the last time. And if one's going to do it, then we all should have to do it. And that's where code enforcement's going to come in and, and be out in that area, police in that area to see, one, what we have for heights, two, to make sure they're in compliance.
This one of my major problems is, if you have enough exceptions, the rules don't So for all those that are grandfathered, all those that sneak up fences, whatever, then the rules doesn't matter. I'll just do what my neighbor did, whatever he did. But if the rule is for everybody and is equally enforced, to me, then it's a rule. It's a good rule. And like you said, we've been over this numerous times and discussed other laws that affect this. To come up with these rules, it just seems fair to me that everybody follows the same rule.
Councilmember Elliott?
No, we have to have a starting point or a start date for them to have been grandfathered in. And then also the figure she gave for the materials...
And then also, the figure she gave for the materials, Anita, that doesn't include the labor that the the owner of the property would have to pay. I'll tell you that I recently had a part put in one of my trucks, and it was thirty dollars, and the labor was over five hundred. So just because the materials are less expensive, the labor's very expensive.
Any other discussion? Lynn, when you're ready, will you open online voting, please?
This one is voting for...
We are voting for the amendment motion, and you'll need to refresh, because I added the amendment motion move to on table, approve the third and final reading, and waive the reading of the ordinance without the grandfather clause, amending Title 19, and it goes on from there. Okay? So you'll need to refresh so that you have that in your computer.
Lynn, how would I vote if I want to vote for them to be grandfathered in?
You'd vote no.
No? Okay.
Let me know when everybody is refreshed, and then I'll open online voting.
I'm ready.
Ready.
Ready?
Online voting is open, thank you. Online voting has closed, the motion passes with five yeas and two nays. The two nays is Vice Mayor Garner and Councilmember Elliott.
All right, moving down to new business and the approval of a twenty-four-hour catering permit. Councilmember Sanger?
I move to approve a twenty-four-hour catering permit for Christie's Inc., DBA Michael's Big City Bar and Grill, liquor license number ninety-one, to cater the Town of Sinclair's employees' Christmas party at the Town of Sinclair Recreation Center, 501 Lincoln Avenue, Sinclair, Wyoming, on Friday, December twelfth, 2025. This event starts at 5:00 PM.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to approve a twenty-four-hour catering permit for Christie's Inc. business as Michael's Big City Bar and Grill, liquor license number ninety-one, to cater the Town of Sinclair employees' Christmas party at the Town of Sinclair's Recreation Center. Michael did call, and he could not be here tonight, he is busy catering another event. But is there any discussion? Lynn, when you're ready, will you open online voting, please?
Online voting is open. So I've only received three votes. Do you want me to go ahead and, I, four of you is not coming through.
Oh, go ahead and do voice vote on those four.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Elliott?
Eay.
Councilmember Lumen?
Yay.
Councilmember Peterson? Patterson?
Hey.
And Councilmember Seelaw?
Yay.
I apologize, thank you, I'm not sure what happened here.
I know.
I'm sure either.
All right, moving down to the approval of a renewal application for the Carbon County Services Inc. doing business as the Rollins Senior Center Advisory Council for pull tabs. Vice Mayor Garner?
I move to approve the renewal application for the Carbon County Senior Services Incorporated, DBA Rollins Senior Center Advisory Council for bingo pull tabs gaming license application. With license in effect until December thirty-fifth, thirty-first, 2026.
Second.
All right. We have a motion to approve the renewal application for the Carbon County Senior Services. Pull tabs, any discussion? I see that you guys are here, thank you. All right, Lynn, when you're ready, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed, the motion passes with seven yeas.
All right, moving down to another renewal application of the City of Rollins Lodge, number six oh nine Benevolent and Protective Order of the Elks, that filed an application for a renewal of bingo and pu- bingo pull tabs gaming license application. Councilmember Patterson?
Move to approve the renewal of application, the City of Rollins Lodge, number six oh nine Benevolent and Protective Order of the Elks. Number six oh nine for a bingo pull tabs gaming license applications with license in effect until December thirty-first, 2026.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to approve the renewal application for the Elks, number six oh nine Bingo Pull Tabs and Gaming License Application. Any discussion? Lynn, when you're ready, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed, the motion passes with seven yeas.
All right, moving down to another renewal application for the Boys and Girls Club of Carbon County that filed an application for the renewal of bingo pull tabs gaming license application. Councilwoman Lumen?
Move to approve the renewal application for the Boys and Girls Club of Carbon County, Inc. for a renewal of the bingo pull tabs gaming license application with license in effect until December thirty-first, 2026.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to approve the renewal application for the Boys and Girls Club for their renewal of bingo pull tabs and gaming license application. Any discussion? Lynn, when you're ready, will you open online voting, please?
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed, the motion passes with six yeas and one abstain, and one abstain was Councilmember Sanger.
All right, moving down to approve a letter of support for the Memorial Hospital of Carbon County. Vice Mayor Garner?
Move to approve and authorize the Mayor, Jacqueline L. Wells, to sign the letter of support for the Memorial Hospital of Carbon County, Wyoming Elevator Replacement Project.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to authorize Mayor Jacqueline R. Wells to sign the letter of support for the Memorial Hospital of Carbon County, Wyoming Elevator Replacement Project. Any discussion? Councilmember Elliott?
I do not support this letter. This hospital has such a reputation in Rollins and myself, knowing the information I do about this organization. I would not support it.
Any other discussion? Lynn, when you're ready, will you open online voting, please?
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed, the motion passes with six yeas and one nay. The one nay is Councilmember Elliott.
All right, moving down to approve a license agreement between the City of Rollins and Earthscope Consortium, Inc. for the operation of a geodetic monitoring station. Council, Councilmember Sanger?
I move to approve the license agreement between the City of Rollins and Earthscope Consortium, Inc. for operation of a geodetic monitoring station and to authorize the mayor to execute the agreement.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to approve the license agreement between the City of Rollins and Earthscope Consortium, Inc. for the operation of geodetic monitoring station and to authorize the mayor to execute the agreement. And Anita, will you just give a quick explanation on this one?
Absolutely, Madam Mayor, Honorable Counsel. This is essentially a seismic monitoring station that has been over by the water treatment plant since 2005. It is part of the National Science Foundation project with the federal government. And they essentially are looking for earth shifts. Fortunately, we're not in a hotbed of activity here. But it just allows, this is just a license agreement, allows them to continue their operations. We did take into consideration the characterization of water facilities and their heightened security requirements, particularly under the federal government and home on security measures. So we have added provisions requiring to comply with that characterization. Additionally, the, while the city is, customarily requires a license fee. In this particular instance, we are requesting that the license fee be waived. They are a science foundation, and they just don't have the money. But this data is helpful to our global citizens.
Any discussion? Councilmember Elliott?
How much is the licensing fee that is being waived?
Madam Mayor, Councilman, Councilman Elliott, fifty dollars a month.
Any other discussion? Lynn, will you open online voting, please?
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed, the motion passes with seven yeas.
All right, moving down to approve the resolution authorizing the governing body of the City of Rollins, Wyoming, delegating authority, the city, delegating authority to the city clerk to review and approve applications for twenty-four-hour malt beverage permits and catering permits. Councilmember Patterson?
Move to approve the resolution authorizing the governing body of the City of Rollins, Wyoming, delegating authority to the city clerk to review and approve applications for twenty-four-hour malt beverage permits and catering permits pursuant to Wyoming statutes, Title twelve and the Rollins Municipal Code.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to approve the, a resolution authorizing the governing body of the City of Rollins, delegating authority to the city clerk to review and approve applications for twenty-four-hour malt beverage permits and catering permits pursuant to the Wyoming statutes, Title twelve and the Rollins Municipal Code. And I will pass it over to you, Attorney Mayberry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Honorable Counsel. This is, under the, so as counsel, you know, knows that licensing for liquor is one of the the, the grants too, that is given to the city by the legislature. And as part of the current ordinances, liquor license catering permits or malt beverage dispensing, it must go through council approval, which is in these meetings, just as we did earlier in the agenda. The intent of this resolution is to delegate that authority to the city clerk, who, who already handles these matters, and to streamline the process. This will allow those businesses to not have to present and to be able to just work directly with Lynn to do this. We have also taken into consideration some timing that requires at least seventy-two hours submission prior to an event. That allows Lynn to conduct all her due diligence and the statutory and ordinance requirements to ensure that this is going to be, and, you know, everything is copacetic. Staff does recommend this resolution.
Great, I will pass it over to you, Councilmember Sanger.
So this was a two o'clock in the morning search? And it actually came from Carbon County. At the time, the Commissioners Jerry Paxton, Leo Chapman, and Commissioner Chairman Terry Wykum approved this through their, this is back in 2010. So they've been doing this for fifteen years. I didn't realize that the county had liquor licenses, but they, they have their own liquor licenses as well. So I'd like to thank them for finding me at 2:00 AM providing us this information that'll allow us to do this, because it will increase their ability to just go and do their work without us having to see them or have a meeting to do that.
Special meeting?
Yeah. So the seventy-two hours makes sense, because we're not open on weekends. And it takes a day to process out paperwork and send off the correct paperwork. All of that work was provided by Lynn. So I want to thank her for doing that work as well. And I think this is a great idea, and we don't have to show up to a meeting so that they can go serve liquor and make money.
I want to thank Councilmember Sanger, because he, his 2:00 AM thoughts, this is going to save our council if it passes. A lot of extra legwork and a lot of extra time, and I think it'll help streamline Lynn's processes as well. That's the goal, anyway. Does anybody have any discussion on this?
I just have...
Vice Mayor Garner?
I just have one question on the seventy-two hours. What happens if a liquor license holder is scheduled for the event, and something happens with that holder, and they drop out like two days or the day before the event, and they request somebody else in an emergency? Is there, is there anything we would have to do for that? I mean, because that could be a situation, and I'd hate to lose an event, the opportunity for an event because of...
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor Garner. There are, the clerk does have discretion, number one, in that regard, but also the state statutes, I believe, allow for, grant the clerk the licensing authority, that discretion. We actually had a similar situation occur last year, there was an event in Sinclair where one of the, the caterers wasn't able to attend that event for whatever reason. And I believe Michael's came in, and, or maybe it was vice versa, came in and was able to save the day. And so it's something we have faced in the past, it's something we have been able to work with. And this will actually just streamline that process without having to require an additional council meeting or special council meeting to accommodate those, those unique circumstances.
Okay, and the reason I ask, because it says it must be submitted, so I don't know, just wanted to make sure there was still...
Discretion.
Yeah, a little bit.
Any other discussion? Lynn, when you're ready, will you open online voting, please?
Online voting is open. Online voting has closed, the motion passes with seven yeas.
All right, moving down to authorizing an amendment to the City of Rollins Fiscal Year 2025-2026 Municipal Budget for Compliance Pay. Councilmember Sanger?
I move to approve the resolution authorizing a budget amendment to the Fiscal Year 2025-2026 Municipal Budget for Compliance Pay for the City of Rollins Personnel Employees in the amount of fifty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixteen cents.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to approve resolution authorizing a budget amendment to the Fiscal Year 2025-2026 Municipal Budget for Compliance Pay for the City of Rollins Personnel Employees in the amount of fifty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventeen cents. Any discussion? Councilwoman Lumen first.
What was it last year? Can you remind us?
It was the same, correct.
Same?
Yeah.
Same last year? Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Elliott?
Why was this not included in the budget?
We are not sure.
There was, there was a reason. There is a reason, it isn't in the deal, because we have to vote on it every year.
Yeah.
We have to do this every year, for some reason.
And it's compliance pay, would that be like a holiday pay?
It's a holiday bonus. We just call it compliance pay.
Okay.
Go ahead, Matt, did you have anything else?
Madam Mayor, I think you covered it pretty well. I think the reason to vote on it, bring it before council every year, is it is kind of at your discretion. If you feel that they shouldn't get it, then you can vote it down. If you think that they should, I'm sure many of them feel like they would be very grateful if you did, then, but that's why. It's not done ahead of time. It's kind of up to you guys, and we like to bring it in and allow you guys to vote on it.
Councilmember Elliott?
So there are several city employees that I'm friends with and actually loved ones in, in the city. But I feel that our current city is, is not where we should be financially. So to take that much money and impact the city by taking...
So to take that much money and impact the city by taking that out of general funds wouldn't be appropriate. If we were in a better financial situation, then I would understand that.
Any other comments? All right, Lynn, will you open online voting, please?
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed and motion passes with six yays and one nay. The one nay is Councilmember Elliott.
All right, moving down to an executive session, Councilwoman Lumen.
I moved in to executive session at seven oh eight PM per Wyoming Statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five A nine and three to consider or receive information classified as confidential by law on matters concerning litigation to which the governing body is a party or proposed litigation to which the governing body may be a party.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to go into executive session at seven oh nine or seven oh eight?
Seven oh eight.
Seven oh eight PM. Any discussion? Lynn, will you open online voting, please?
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed and motion passes with seven yays.
What was the vote on that compliance pay? Was it six to one?
Six to one.
Okay. Nope, I know where, I just, I missed the vote, count on that.
I love the decorating, you can do the decorating, did you do it? Great.
I don't have my lights, I can't find my lights.
Your what?
The lights are going underneath the kit light, the white lights. Can't find them downstairs, we had boxes.
I have boxes, you need white? I have boxes, I was just finishing pulling out. You can bring your marine mart. Go to Buffalo Street Rental and have, have a heyday with decorations. I even have some at my office, so if you just want white?
Yep.
They can plug in, they don't have to be battery.
Nope, plug is right here.
There are C-sevens, LED, just to go underneath.
Just underneath the kit plate.
Underneath. Yeah, okay, just, okay, I have two strings, I just pulled out like three hours ago and I said not to use them because I was so cold and freezing being outside all afternoon and I'm like, can't think of them. It didn't say how cold before I started, but at the time Steve came down to help us and then I ended up having to rewire a tree, a big tree.
Oh, no. I have, I have, I have two strings, it'll be perfect.
We have gold ones. Gold sagebrushes. We put, one year at Christmas, we put gold sagebrush on the, I got churros. Did you see the gold trees there?
I have not seen them.
They look so good, I gotta give Williams a shout out for building well this far.
I was gonna do little lights coming up, just like little fairy lights.
I have those too.
We could just get bump beds, we could not want to-
If you put a brown pole next to them, Alan will take the top.
I did not use the drop to finish. I had a couple on and I ended up, like, I had something on and I ended up totally wiped because I was very busy trying to do it. I had to get some for the bottom.
I have two strings, I will go proper.
Well, I used paper bags and they didn't come out the way I wanted.
No, no, I think the paper bags are good.
Because I didn't have any, I had that last year for a while. I have a little storage, I can buy some more.
Rula? I have a ton of Rula. You just need to come shopping right at store. Buffalo Street Rental, we have plenty.
Your backup?
No, I don't have a backup.
Your backup?
Yeah, so I have thirteen or fourteen.
Do you want to plug your phone back in?
No, it's good.
Is it? Is that like ten percent?
That'll last, I'm telling you, I didn't charge it for two days, so. That's why it died, I was surprised, I forgot that it needs charge. Thank you for charging it.
Maybe I have charger for a radio, an Android?
That's what that cord was.
Oh, it was?
Oh, I think it's Lynn's charger.
Couldn't I just realize my phone is on?
Did you saw my cord?
Yeah, I just left it in case you, I thought you might leave it.
Oh, yeah.
Because I just said ten percent, I was like-
I leave it there so it's on camera.
Yeah, can I get it? I didn't realize I must have not charged my phone.
Well, what's it on?
That's what I need.
Oh, I actually have a, I have a thing, it's fancy.
Faint.
It's fancy?
We're never going to have a conversation, are we?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Yes, because I need you to fix-
We're notorious for that.
I need you to fix stickers for the next week for me.
Uh-oh.
That was a conversation for, was that two weeks ago?
Yeah.
Are you up here tomorrow?
Yeah. So-
What is your schedule?
I'm gonna go to lunch with Matt sometime after eleven thirty and then I have a meeting at two.
It's about early tomorrow morning. I'm sure it's gonna be enough with this, because it's a word.
Let's see how fast it turns. Come on, man. Ass charging. It'll probably take five minutes to get another ten percent.
Because your iPhones have Cs.
Yeah.
So that block actually has Cs.
Do you want to do it first thing in the morning?
I have a meeting at ten. So morning, let's do, can we do it afternoon? Like after the two o'clock meeting? That should last no longer than an hour, it should be done by three.
Your lunch will be down?
No, I have a meeting, so after lunch I have a meeting at two.
Okay. You do not have to dress up. You can- Yeah, lunch, do you want to go to the office?
I did the brewery tour.
I'm gonna come to your office.
Which is easier for you?
Well, I need three things. We need to, one, talk about the package, two, some stickers, I want to see if you can fix that we used last year, and three, we're talking about Desert Dust mural on my wall these, it might be easier for you to come to my building to use look at the mural.
Okay.
We can't watch it print, so he's a mural.
Okay.
So do you want to just come to the office?
We do have a work session.
Yeah, that works.
After.
Which times are you guys kicking off? Seven thirteen, seven fourteen?
It wasn't very long.
I think, I just couldn't remember the time when I got up there. What time did you do it?
Seven thirteen.
Seven thirteen. Yeah.
I don't know. He's not here yet, the guy that's coming to talk.
Oh, he's too fast.
I know.
Lynn, it was seven thirteen, did I tell you seven thirteen? Okay.
Oh, yeah, it's good, yeah. That's where Matt and I went for lunch last time.
Oh, yeah.
All right, Councilmember Patterson?
Move to come out of executive session for Wyoming Statute sixteen dash four dash four oh five A nine and three at seven nineteen PM.
Second.
Okay, a motion to come out of the executive session at seven nineteen PM. Any discussion? All right. Lynn, will you open online voting, please?
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed and motion passes with seven yays.
All right, moving down to approval of executive session minutes of November fourth. Do I hear a motion? Vice Mayor Garner?
Actually, I have a question.
Oh.
I can, do I abstain on the executive session to come out? I don't abstain to come out, right? I just abstain on the, any objections or, you can't remember? Okay, all right. And then I move to approve the executive session in minutes of November fourth, two thousand twenty-five, regular city council meeting as presented.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve the executive session minutes of November fourth, regular city council meeting as presented. Any discussion? Lynn, will you open online voting, please?
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed and motion passes with six yays. The one abstain, the one abstain is Councilmember Patterson.
All right, were there any objections for matters discussed in executive session? Okay, seeing that there are no objections, we will adjourn this regular council meeting at seven twenty-one PM. And we will take a small recess before the work session begins, because I believe we're waiting on our person. Okay, great.
That's what confuses me. I abstain, only approve the minutes next time.
Yep, yep.
I was like-
That's what confuses me. To approve session minutes, I knew that would prevail. What happens if somebody says no that they don't approve them? Then you have to go back into executive session?
No, it just gets documented.
Just documented, yeah.
I do have a question on that, though. Why isn't it on the agenda? That, that, that last question? I was curious about that, we don't document it here, like as a line item, but was there any objection?
Because it's not a motion.
But it's not, why isn't it a line item to show documentation for later or something? Does that make sense?
I think if there, if there was, then they would just note it in the minutes.
But, right, but so like everything else is a discussion item, so we have a discussion item, so wouldn't that be considered like a discussion item for executive session? Was there an objection, yes, no, or, and they just say?
Comment.
Right. But I'm just saying, why, it's not designated as a, as a thing in there, since it's something we do every single time. I was just curious.
Yeah. I guess we won't need a brief. Does anybody need a bathroom break before we get started?
I am good.
All right. Tell me when you're ready, Myron, I'll start the meeting.
Right.
At the end, we say, were there any objections every time we have an executive session? So why don't we have it as a discussion piece that, you know, it's not a true discussion, but it's, because we asked the question and we say yes or no, why don't we put that as a bullet?
Yeah. 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 Oh, okay. I was just curious if it was like something we do weird or-
Now we lost Steve.
Did he take a bathroom break?
I don't know.
I think he did.
We'll give him a minute.
We'll give him a minute.
Was it you who texted me the other day?
Oh, my goodness.
I don't know who texted me and I assumed it was for you, so. I don't know.
This is amazing.
I've lost several of these phone numbers I've added into my phone for the last two years, so I'm sorry. I tried to call it and it, it answered, so it's like, yeah.
All right, so we will now call this work session to order at seven twenty-six PM and it's a discussion on possible housing development with future expansion of commercial development. And I will go ahead and pass it over to you, Lou.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, the Honorable Counsel. As a matter of fact, I don't know the chopped up his last name, but Frank, yeah, you correct me if I'm wrong there, Frank, but I didn't, I didn't meet Mr. Dawkins when I was in Chicago from Brownsville, but we've been in contact quite a bit with different plans on the property east of the TA. And what, what we have on our packet tonight is basically the location. We also have a structure that's in that area with the water line, sewer line. We have just a bunch of information that has been provided to me over the last year, I think, that we've been in contact. I think, I think this meeting tonight is going to be for- Um, I think, I think this meeting tonight is going to be for informational purposes only for the council. Um, if anybody has any questions, um, we'll, we'll have the gentleman answer that when we get done with the presentation. But, um, I met Frank in, in Chicago, like I said, when we went to the Brownsville training. And the only time that we could hook up was at nine thirty at night. And driving through Chicago, nine thirty at night, in the good parts of town, and I assume the bad parts of town. I made it back to the hotel, saved a call my plane that same morning, so thank you, Frank, for getting me back here. Um, but, uh, we have a slideshow, and I, I told Frank we had to keep it to a minimum tonight. Um, I'm thinking that we can get him for thirty minutes. And like I said, this is probably going to be the first work session that we have out of, say, a couple. Just the further we get into the project, we know that we have to, um, go through Y dot for access. Um, we know that we have to contract the, the penitentiary as well. Can you hear me okay, Frank? Jeffrey, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, I hear you. I think Frank's having a hard time.
Okay. Can you hear me, Frank?
I'm sorry?
Can you hear us okay now? Can you hear us?
It's all right. Uh, I'm just, I'll touch Jeffrey, thanks. Okay. We're on the G car right now. But I can hear, and I'm.
Okay, so I guess, uh, Mr. Dawkins will, will go with you then, but this, this project consists of, uh, homes and the possibility of a future development of a, a hotel in that area. And we, we have been talking about this for quite some time, and I think the further along we go with this project. I think it's going to be something that, uh, we'll come to like, once we get all of the pieces in, in place. Mr. Dawkins, would you like to touch base now on this?
Well, I, I guess I come in after Frank wants you, uh, show the slides, and then I could come in and ask questions.
Can Frank hear us?
I can introduce, I can, I can introduce myself. My name is Jeffrey Dawkins, and I'm the president and CEO of N G H Group. Uh, I've been in the hotel industry now for six years. Been in the residential, uh, industry since nineteen eighty-seven, so I do raise some type of expertise with, uh, building affordable houses and bringing hotels. Thanks, and thanks for having us.
Like I said, uh, this has been an ongoing, um, project that seems like we brought it to council that we could possibly have development over there and then kind of fell off. Then it came back, so we've been going back and forth with this. I know Frank has done work in Saratoga, and that's where he thought that he could move his resources to this area. And, and start developing some in this area with, with, uh, the city. Start through the slideshow.
Oh, well, I think you better.
It's him calling.
Madam Mayor, may I?
Of course.
Hello.
Mr. Chi-Haw, I have.
I, I'm, I'm on the screen, but I can't get audio.
Hey, we, we heard you on, on your phone. Talk on, talk on your phone.
All right, okay, I'm good. I'm good now.
Can you hear us okay now, Frank?
Frank, can you hear me speaking? This is the lady in red at the front. Can you hear me?
It's his left.
He's got a sound muted.
That's his phone?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll just have to do it this way, Frank, so, um, I'll stay on the phone here, you just go ahead and talk away once I introduce you, okay?
Okay, good.
Okay, this is, this is Frank. Um, like I said, we, we took a tour in Chicago. Um, and it was, it was quite the adventure. Um, Frank has done work in Saratoga, and he wants to bring his resources to the city. He owns that property that we have on our slideshow. And, um, housing and a possible hotel is, is what we're looking at. And in, in the paperwork that we have, um, there has been numerous, uh, well, numerous housing, um, developments that he has done. Um, what we're looking at doing. And once we, once we start this process, then we'll go through and, and do a subdivision. Um, we'll make sure that we have access to the roads, um, make sure that the penitentiary and all the surrounding residents are well aware of what's going on in that area. So Frank, at this point in time, I will turn it over to you, sir, and I'll let you fire away.
Okay, thank you, Louis. Thank you, uh, council members and staff. I, I recognize you've had, uh, a council meeting and, uh, it's, and it's been a long day for everyone. So I'm going to try and be brief. We hope that we can be done within thirty minutes as an introductory session. Uh, and, uh, we look forward to questions. I want to say that, that we've been neighbors for eighteen years. Louis is correct that, that my partner and I made investments in the property in Rawlins. And also, we had twenty-four lots in Saratoga. That property, we went forward with first. Actually, after one of our colleagues died. Um, a fellow I used since I was nineteen years old. His wife and my wife graduated high school together. He was a real estate expert. And he was the catalyst for purchasing the property in Saratoga as well as Rawlins. He died a few years ago of Alzheimer's. And then there were two of us. So I came to, I came to my owner, my colleague Victor would be on the phone. However, at this point in time. He's getting medical help because he has a blood disorder, uh, and it's cancers. What we did in Saratoga was basically develop property in accordance to what the city wanted. And that's what we want to do here. We've read the master plan more than once. And our focus is on affordable housing. For both Victor and myself. This project is really for my grandchildren and great-grandchildren. I'm eighty-three, Victor's seventy-eight. After Saratoga. We were also looking at the potential for a hotel. This led us to Jeffrey Dawkins. Jeff, over the last two years plus, we've spent time working together, developing an approach for Rawlins. And the way we came together was really on the hotel. We commissioned a feasibility study. And, uh, I think we, I'm, I'm, I'm sure we shared that with, with Louis. In terms of priorities. We shifted to affordable housing. Regarding the hotel. Radisson Hotel has Jeffrey as an approved developer and investor. When Radisson, the hotel, was sold to Choice Hotel. They also recognized Jeffrey and his colleagues' skills. And so our project was conceptually approved by Choice Hotel. We now believe we're at a point in time that we should raise our heads and say hello and, uh, and, uh, respond and show, show you what we have come up with. And with that. I think that, well, the other, the one other thing is with Jeffrey, not only does he have hotel experience, but he also has, and his group also has affordable housing experience. And so that was the bellwether for us to be able to go forward. I know Jeffrey will comment, but we expect to use all local help that is required for the project. Uh, with that, I'd like to turn this over to Jeffrey to go through our basics slide deck for your review. And I want to thank you for your time. I realize that, uh, it's windy in Rawlins and it's cold. And, uh, but that's not unusual for you hardy folks. Uh, I want to tell you that Thanksgiving weekend in Chicago, we had nine, I had nine and a half, uh, inches, and, uh, tonight it's going to be zero. So we're trying to get hearty enough to be able to be a good neighbor. Jeffrey, if there's, if there aren't any questions, I'd like to turn it over to Jeffrey to move forward with this, with the information. I believe Louis, Louis, I believe you said you were going to go through the slide.
Yes, and then we've got the, we have the slides pulled up now. We'll just start on the first one that has the, uh.
Okay, go here.
That has the, um, picture of some of the projects that you've done. And if any time that you want to stop through the slides, then we'll, we'll stop. If council has questions, um, we'll stop at that point as well. And if not, we'll just keep moving forward with your project.
Okay. You go here, Louis.
Okay, so this, this, this is what, um, the project would look like with affordable housing. Um, granted, we do have to meet setbacks, um, we do have to meet, um, if we're going to keep it R seven five, then we'd have to look at developing lots of seventy-five hundred square feet. We decide to do something other than that. The unique part about this is we have part of the section which is commercial, and the other portion is residential seven point five. Previously, on the last zone change, this was one of the zones that, um, city staff wanted to change to make it all commercial, and they chose to keep it residential and, um, commercial. So that's where we're at today with this, this section of land, uh, east of the T A. Okay, the next one. And, and this just has the information that I would like to see if council would just read through this. And if they have any questions, just if we make notes on it, and then when we have our, our other, our other, um, work session, then that would be the time to get more in depth in it. This is just to touch base on what, what the project would entail.
Councilmember Sanger.
So if we remain at seven point five, R seven five, you have twenty acres, how many housing units is this?
I think you were going to ask that. Um, that would be a question for the next meeting. My phone's, I'm, I'm talking to Frank, so I don't want to lose him. But I can, I can get that figured out, and then when we have our next work session, then we could, uh, get that figured out for you.
Okay.
And it's, we're not opposed to either trying to keep it R seven five, or if we want to do something different like multifamily, then there's always that option that we can do differently.
That allows flexibility down hand up?
Yes.
All right, Jeffrey. Uh, Louis, I don't hear you.
So, can, can you hear me, Frank?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Also add, I'm sorry. So that, uh, depends upon demand. If there's the demand for the project, we want to be able to accommodate as we can, that's appropriate, that the city will provide.
And that, that's where we would come in and look at what the demand is at that point, Frank. Uh, but right now.
Yes.
Yeah, the way it's listed is, uh, R seven five, and if the demand called for, uh, multifamily, then I know we had talked about doing some of that as well.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. So if we go to the slide that has the, the property looking at the land from the T A position, looking towards the southwest. This just gives an indication of where this property is located. The next slide is the same thing with the property looking southeast. Then we get into the affordable housing, um, and this, this is all information that, uh, if council can find time to look this over, and if they have questions at the next work session. Then at that point, I think we could get the questions answered for the council.
This slide says a hundred homes. Is that just an estimate?
That should be right. Twenty acres, seventy-five hundred.
So a hundred.
About a hundred. There you go.
A hundred houses, yes.
It's hidden in the details.
So these are just, and the next slide is just a detailed portion of what the, the housing development could look like. There again, we would have to look at, uh, setbacks and, and make sure we can meet our setbacks in them areas as well. And then I don't know if, if Mr. Dawkins, if, if you can explain on the thermal steel panel systems. Um, we do have that in on this slide as well.
Okay. Uh, thermal steel is a, a system where everything comes in that one panel. You don't have to do any insulation or anything like that. It's wind resistant, it's heat resistant. If it's a fire in one section, uh, of the house, it burns itself out there. Uh, we're looking to come in with, uh, net zero energy efficiency, and it's that criteria as, uh, thermal steel. So that would be the, um, framing of a, of a house. And then if we want to go exterior with brick, siding, anything like that, uh, natural metal. Where it was breakable, siding, anything else to bring color look of the building.
Okay. Go to the solar. And then on the, the affordable energy housing, or the affordable energy, Mr. Dawkins. I know there was talk about.
Yeah.
Solar panels as well? solar panels as well?
Yes, again, just looking at commercial and residential, we would like to take a portion of that land in the middle so we could take care of both areas with solar panels and other types of solar equipment that could go there. I'm looking at another source that we could put there, which is a container that will be able to bring the same amount of energy as those solar panels. But you have a group, organization, and partnership with us on this project.
And then, Mr. Dawkins, can you go into the net zero portion of this handout that we've given council as well?
Yes, that basically will be for, again, the, whatever we decide to build, whether it's little family homes, townhomes, anything of that nature. We'd be looking to make those homes net zero. Basically, get all the energy from the sun, solar, water, things of that nature. And also, with the hotel that we build, also be a net zero hotel. And that's with, it's a net zero hotel, we would have live flowers and anything like that. That will give you that oxygen and move all the oxygen out there. You got it, Louis?
Yes.
We're good. And then what about the slide that has Green? Yes, sir.
I would just add one thing, I think around the site.
What's that?
Sorry?
What did you need Frank on, what is it, the site?
Yeah, I just wanted to say on the hotel, the green year hotel, that slide? Right, the slide we're on. I just wanted to indicate a very important point. That is, the reason you do hotels and you select a brand is because of their reservation system. And that's what makes Choice Hotels for us the winner, particularly at the price points that we're examining. However, the important thing about a net zero program is there are more than one survey, but the survey indicates that that if a traveler is looking for a hotel and is driving on I-80 and they are not attached to a particular brand, 80% of hotel customers will stay at a hotel that is a net zero. It just, that's the reason we want to do it. It will drive more traffic through, through the hotel. It will also drive more traffic through law and rules. Okay?
Okay. So, and then on the dual-brand hotel that you had in this package, Sleep Inn, Mainstay Suites, is that some, well, I guess is that the companies that you would work with for the branding on that hotel per se?
Yes, that's Choice Hotels. They're both Choice Hotels. But the reason is, the Mainstay has kitchens and it's for somebody who is dealing with larger space. So, for example, if St. Clair is bringing temporary workers in, they have, can have a choice at a rate that probably is better than what they're currently paying. And so, we would add that kind of mechanism to the market. Did I say that right, Jeffrey?
Yes. We have, one side is the short-term business is coming down, maybe there's a family member for the weekend or something like that. And like Frank said, the other one is people just coming down, so we'll stay on standard state.
And then on, then on the floor plans, that also shows the extended stay and the short stay, correct?
Correct. And 82 keys, which represents 82 rooms.
So then we just go through the site plan and look at that with council. And if there's any questions, we'll move through the slides here Frank, if you and Jeffrey, you're okay with that?
Yes.
So, one, I guess one question that I would have on this hot shots, get in the game, what would that consist of?
A shot is a family-oriented bar, bar and grill. You have pool tables, darkboards, you have a table set up to eat dinner. And it's one, one bar. It's a family entertainment, head to head.
Okay.
7,500 square.
And just, I might also say that it's one idea that we're moving forward with. And so, we're prepared to make adjustments based upon the input received from members, city council members.
This is a brand that I work with, so I work with the owners, franchise of this company.
And just to bring the council up to speed, it seems like every time I talk to Frank, he's always asking, what does Rawlins need? We need restaurants, we need fast food. And I'm still trying to push that point across to him. And hopefully he'll bite on it, but it's going to take a little work with him. So, I am, council, I'm really looking forward to working with these guys. It just seems like we have a lot of material here that, I know it's going by quick, but I would ask that if you guys have time, look at it. And any ideas that you have, I would be open to relay that when we have our next workshop, that we can discuss the ideas that council members have and move forward.
I like the idea of a family-run bar that has games in it. Places for families to go and hang out when it's cold, sounds really appealing.
May I ask, is the mayor asking a question?
No, I just made a statement.
She, she likes the idea of the family restaurant slash bar where we have something for the citizens here in Rawlins to do?
Okay. Yes, absolutely.
Councilmember Elliott?
Is it possible, because I hear this a lot, although I do not participate in it, bowling? People said that they want bowling, oh, and also roller rink. But that might be too big for this, I'm not sure. But a lot of people in Rawlins have interest in bowling and roller skating. Again, I don't participate, but I have heard that quite a bit.
Councilwoman Lemon?
I do like the idea of the hotels, your extended stay. We have turnarounds with the refinery that would utilize that tremendously. And having a sports bar close by would also be quite an addition to our town. The whole project would be quite exciting for Rawlins to have affordable housing as well as a new hotel and facilities. You also have here something about oxygen. What is that? Could you let us know what that is?
What that?
Something about oxygen. Madden oxygen.
That, that, that is oxygen that goes inside your skin and it generates, your blood circulates, hydration and everything. Grape apnea creates, basically, people like myself with hip injuries and everything like that, it relaxes your body. So, that's something that we could have in a swimming pool, cover, we'll have a swimming pool. And probably in the suites, we'll probably have an instrument.
Okay, so it's not like a separate spa? It's not a separate spa or anything, it's just part of the hotels? Hotel?
Yeah, because we probably have a spa in, is there with, you would have a spa?
Okay, thank you.
Is that a question? Okay. Councilmember Patterson?
Then I think, we passed insurance, we want to make sure that all our employees at the hotel and everybody have health benefits and things to that next. That was the slide that we just passed. I just got involved with an organization, with a program that has a lot of good benefits. That program is coming along with a hotel, sports bar. The salary is at least 15, $15,000 to $2,000. They'll be equipped in a table, pretty decent wage.
Good. The only question I have, is this plot of land that we're talking about, is it already in the city limits?
Yes.
Okay.
And then we're just going to go through the, the eight acres of land that would still be available, Jeffrey?
Yes, this is, this is the acres that will be available to someone who might want to come in. And we'll be leasing out to the hotel, build that building out. We will have to commercialize it. Might be available for a bowling alley or a roller.
There you go.
Anything you want to bring in Frank, we're all for, so you bring it in and we'll use it. I can't roller skate no more because I might break something.
Well, we don't want that.
I think that is, you will break something.
No, it's, it's all based upon demand. We'll do it if the demand is there.
Okay. Is there anything else on the slide show that you guys wanted to touch base on, Frank and Jeffrey?
Yes. I do, one, yeah, it's, can you keep going forward on the slide to us? This is some of our projects that Jeffrey said about with, that gives you a little view. But the one thing I would add that's not on the slide is that we're obviously aware that at the state level, there's a request for affordable housing. And there are also programs that are available for affordable housing. We want to be able to access those programs. Some initial discussion. But again, we're not going to do anything without council approvals or concurrence as well as the recognition that, that whenever opportunities are available, particularly dealing with the infrastructure, if we're able to get grant money or some of the money that has not been spent at the state level, it'll only reduce the price for the affordable housing and create more demand and more availability. That's it. Look forward to working with you, Louis. And also, good health, Louis. And tomorrow, Lou, I'm going to see you at my architect, put out some designs, we'll take townhomes, affordable housing. I'll forward that to you in the morning.
Okay, that sounds good. And I want to thank you guys and council as well, and our attorney, city manager, and the audience that we do have. I want to thank everybody for attending this. And if there's any questions, like I said, we plan on having another work session to keep rolling forward. And we'll just keep rolling it until we see something happening.
We want to build in the spring.
Okay.
Good.
We're ready. We better move faster.
Yes.
Okay. And thank you for
Thank you.
Thank you for getting this done. And I would just say to everybody, stay safe and stay warm.
You too, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Was there anything else, Lou?
No, that was it. We just want to, we just want to keep moving forward. And there's been a lot of hours upstairs and there's been a lot of hours on the phone with Mr. Frank.
I'm sure.
Like I said, when I went to Chicago for Brownsville, when he called me and said, I'm free at 9:20, I said, well, I've got to be at the airport before 3:00. I catch my flight. Oh, I'll have you home in an hour. Okay. An hour turned to 12:40. And then I was worried I wasn't going to wake up from my flight back to the airport. And it was, it was quite the experience. And it's something that whenever, whichever training you go to, you always pick up something. And meeting him up there and wearing like this old sedan, which, like I said, he took me in places that I would never go in and do. I want to thank the city for that and Brownsville for that trip that was excellent. And hopefully we can get this project off of the ground and move on forward.
That would be awesome.
All right, well, with no further business, oh. Go ahead, come on up Scott.
Just to add to that, a little that I shared with me a couple of years ago, and we'd be really excited to have some more neighbors on that side over there. So, I just asked the city of Scott there, for those of you who don't know me, so we would really appreciate it and extend every courtesy and reasonable accommodation to get them over there. A couple of things I would ask before it gets too far along, look at the width of that overpass going over there. Because, I mean, there's been some terrible things, somebody almost got pushed off a couple of years ago. And if you look at it like Curtis Street and Harney in Laramie, how like the city of Laramie got some grants through YDOT and USDOT to beautify those overpasses, it might be a way to, to do that. And then also, and I've talked to Frank previously, it would be, and I think the TA's done a much better job here recently, keeping the trash down. Because that could be really kind of an eyesore over there. And this is so much better of a project here than what was before the city council, what, 12, 15 years ago, where they were going to put in a temporary man camp to have that off of one of your interchanges. And with the CCRs they were proposing at the time, were pretty, pretty loose. So, we would champion that and stuff to, to do. Would have a concern on mom and dad's road though. However, that's going to be flushed out. Lou, is that going to be the primary entrance or are they going to come off the Penn Road?
No, we would have to get access from YDOT to come off the Penn Road.
Okay.
So, and then when we get to the planning process,
Yeah.
we can say that this is, this road is going to be off with us.
Yeah, that, if they want to use it, that's, that's fine. We just bring some pretty heavy loads in with those cows and the hay and stuff like that. heavy loads in with those cows and the hay and stuff like that, if they were going to pave it, have to stand up to those, those standards. And then, the other thing, on that Penn Road, go out there seven o'clock in the morning and see all the semis that are parked there. Now, go to the little hamlet of Elk Mountain, on their interchange, they have the no parking signs on, but they aren't out there. On that interchange, there are no, no parking signs out there, and the trucks, you know, they're going to have somewhere to park, and it's very dangerous in the wintertime when the interstate's closed, and you've got employees going back and forth to the Penn. Sometimes you can be down to one lane, and if there was an emergency, I, I don't know what would happen. I mean, just, it would, it would be tough. So, I think some re-planning and some discussion with the Penn, with YDOT and stuff like that, maybe could help these developers a long ways.
That would be, that would be our next step, is to get all the surrounding businesses, you know, the TA, Penitentiary, YDOT, because we do have to gain, get access from them to come in, onto the thinking ballpark.
Yeah, they'd have to make another cut.
Yeah, that's, that's part of the puzzle that we're going to keep working with, and I would love to have you involved.
Yeah, yeah, we'd be happy to help any way we can and stuff. And then, just to dev into that, you've got a pretty good antelope population over there, they might want to think about some, some fencing, and I've talked to the city manager, we've had some issues on the easements, on mom and dads there at I-80, we don't have the, the antelope on that side, you know, and the geese occasionally, which Madame Mayor knows about, and stuff to, to do that. It might facilitate and help them just a, a little bit if they could put something up, and we'll get the rest of the, the easement stuff worked out that we've got with the, the city and stuff on that, but, I mean, that would be, I think, a great, a great opportunity for the city of Rollins, all in front of you, wise people.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm going to wear my legislative hat for a minute. There's a bill that myself and Trey Sherwood, again, it's a budget year, we don't know if we'll get any traction, it may not be for this project, but it's an investment in Wyoming housing for affordable, and zero, affordable housing, zero and low-interest loans to municipalities for infrastructure, we're going to bring that to session, and start, try to get at least some momentum, but we are working on that, it's a new bill for low and moderate income housing, so.
I remember something about the state working to make basically semi-parking along Interstate 80, I don't know how far along that project is.
They have a lot at Fort Steele, right?
Yeah, they finished, yeah.
They did one just outside of Laramie. Yeah, to try to help with the congregation of all those semis, that they can have other places to park that aren't.
The problem with that one is there's no bathrooms and there's no food.
Yeah.
Well, we got Walmart.
No, I mean the one by Fort Steele.
The parking area, you got Walmart for their parking area.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, with no further business, we'll conclude the workshop at eight-eleven.
I don't think I can thank you enough for moving the time of this meeting.
Isn't it nice?